That we'll take roll call.
Everyone's present.
Having everybody here in a quorum, we'll call the Wabash City School Board meeting for Monday, June 5th, 2023 to order. Will everybody please stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin each Wabash City School Board meeting by reading the Wabash City Schools' mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career-ready for success in the global community. Like to welcome everybody here tonight. Do we have any recognitions?
Yes, we have Ms. Scholl here this evening, and she will be providing us with an update on The Lion King Junior Play.
Great, thank you. Hi, can I do I just speak from here?
You can, yeah.
I'm Mandy. Yeah, we had a really interesting show this year, and it was a big project, so pretty much have called everything to a close. We've got some thank you letters that still need to go out that Sarah and I are working on. A little late, but sometimes things move a little more slowly. I had the privilege of saying yes and just basically asking Rafa not to say no. He thought he was in over his head. And I said, you know, let's do this, I'll help. And it was such a collaborative effort. We had so many volunteers, so many families involved. And as you guys know, we had three really great shows. We were able to compensate three directors for that show and also cover a lot of other expenses through ad sales for our program and donations that were solicited from the community, from businesses, individuals, families. And altogether, the amount that was gathered with the DVD sales and all of that kind of stuff, we ended up at like $7,000 coming through, and that doesn't count, you know, ticket sales and all of that kind of stuff. It was from that, the teachers were paid. I believe all of our bills are paid, and I think we might have made a little bit, not much. And I was really trying not to make money because I felt an obligation with the donors to make sure that we were covering our costs, and it grew into a big project. I guess about it and wrap up, I have been following up with the parent committee and just kind of figuring out where we're at. There was a lot of interest in doing another show next year. I know Rafa hasn't been able to say yes to that yet, although he's willing to talk about it maybe in the fall. If we don't put the cart before the horse this time, I would say if we have a plan by September, we could easily do another show and we probably could lower our budget with, you know, going in course first in that kind of situation. I think one of the key components was having three directors. That's something that's unusual in our area for a show like that to compensate three people. So I think moving forward, even if Rafa in his last year here, because honestly, he's only with us for one more year, if he didn't want to do it, I would propose that other people could get together and help make that happen. That's something I did at MSD for about seven years, a drama coach. But I think the exciting thing is that we got to do some theater in our school district, which we haven't done in a couple of years, and I'm a big advocate for that. So I just kind of want to leave you guys with those thoughts. I'm happy to produce, kind of that's, I guess, what my role was again as volunteer. What I was really inspired by was how onboard everyone got with me, my iron fist back there backstage, and that we achieved a level of focus that created the incredible show that we had. And that people who really didn't understand what was going on by the end were onboard saying, what are we doing next year? How about The Little Mermaid? So in terms of moving forward, I know one of the issues that had come up in the beginning and also at the end was, gosh, it's great that DLI is doing this, but what about everybody else? So I would also put that out there. I think there's a stipend that's been unused for the last couple of years in not having a drama coach. But again, I'd like to put it out there, I would be happy to produce a show or, you know, be a drama coach or whatever, we could do that, DLI or not. But in terms of doing a show with Spanish lyrics again, we weren't the first necessarily to ever do such a thing. We might have been the first school to do Lion King that way. We did, we were the first to get special permission to do Lion King, and I think Disney has a pretty large repertoire of familiar shows. Of course, not every show is The Lion King, but if people want, you know, I think there's a lot of potential growth for having theater in our district using the model that we just created, which was a community-funded, community-led project. So again, I think if we make plans in September, we could move forward with any kind of theatrical ideas, and I do have plans to follow up with Rafa when he gets back to town in the fall. Does anyone have any questions for me or? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
All right. Next, we do have a revision to the agenda. Item H2, which is approve the following trip for boys cross-country team and out-of-state trip to train in Colorado at the YMCA of the Rockies Snow Mountain Ranch from June 10th through the 25th, 2023. Accept a motion on the revision. Motion is second. All those in favor of approving revisions to the agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? The agenda is amended. At this point, are there any visitors that wish to comment on an agenda item tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will move on with the consent agenda. We do have minutes of the May 18th, 2023 meeting and minutes of the May 22nd, 2023 meeting. Claims, we do have some donations. $200 from Pizza King for robotics world competition, $200 from Downtown Nutrition for robotics world competition, $200 from Rich Valley Lions Club for robotics world competition, $250 from Gaunt and Sun Asphalt for robotics world competition, $100 from Teresa Eiler to the OJ Neighbors Hungry Kids Fund. And we do not have financials at this meeting. So with that, I would accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
The motion is second, discussion.
We'd like to thank the businesses for their donation to the OJ's Robotics World Competition Trip. That money will be put into an ECA account, and we use it to help offset the cost the parents paid for traveling to, for their students traveling to the competition. And then thank you to Teresa Eiler for her donation to the OJ Hungry Kids Fund.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, June 19th, 2023 at Wabash City Hall, 202 South Wabash Street, Wabash, Indiana at 6:00 PM. We do have a few items of communications. There is no old business, new business. Board will learn about the various Honeywell Arts and Education programs that are offered to our district.
Right. And I think Dr. Sibley has a presentation. She's going to try to project.
It's like another computer is connected to that. So it's, that's why. So I'm not sure why we're only seeing a small portion, so.
I can talk to you during the day that you can't make out. Is it okay if I present at some point on the way back?
Yep.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Kristi Under, the Director of Education at Honeywell. And I asked Dr. Sibley a couple of months ago if I could present this evening because, for two reasons really. One, to say thank you, because we have an incredible partnership with Wabash City Schools, and we are grateful for that. But also because I've been in the community all my life, and as, as many times as I talk with people about Honeywell Arts and Education, I realize there's a lot that they don't know. And so we're trying to fix that, one school board meeting and one presentation at a time. So with that, we'll go ahead and look at the first slide. Starting with our classroom programs, these are programs that we take into the classrooms. This particular program, Visual Thinking Strategies, is a monthly program. All of our in-school programming is free of charge to the schools and provided through Honeywell, either teaching artists or facilitators. So Visual Thinking Strategies is not a new program. It was actually founded in 1987 by Philip Ginawen. He was the Director of Education at the Museum of Modern Art. And he teamed up with Abigail Hausen, who was a cognitive psychologist. And the goal was for them to create something that would lift the level in which people view art so that they could create this magical change in the way people think about art. But what happened far surpassed their goals. What they learned and what Harvard Project Zero found is that when you give people a chance to talk about art, it jumpstarts all these cognitive processes in the brain and really changes the way people process information. And so this program, like I said, is monthly. We go in from September through April. We take three visual art pieces and have a 30-minute conversation. The questions are very precise, and we don't change them. What's going on in this picture? What do you see that makes you say that? And what more can we find? And the reason is, just like I mentioned earlier, we're trying to build these processes that stick so that when kids encounter anything new, they have these same things to go back to, same question. So if you can't really see it, but in the bottom picture, that is our first image that we used the first year in third grade. And so our goal is to move kids from making like a simple observation to a supported inference. And when I say supported inference, those of you that are not in the, you know, in the classroom every day, what that means is, a third grader might say, I think the person laying in bed is ill because I see medicine on the nightstand. Another reason I think that is because it looks like it's daylight, and why would they be laying in bed if they're not sick during the day? The reason that's important is, well, there's a lot of reasons things like that are important. We want kids to be able to reason with evidence. But it's a tested skill, too. When we think about I-Learn and constructive response, kids have to be able to make an inference, support their thinking with evidence, explain how their evidence answers the question, and so on. And so we give them an opportunity also each month to write. They write for 15 minutes about a new image. And this doesn't happen in the art room. It happens in the regular Gen Ed classroom because it's much like close reading of the text, we're just using art as the text. So if we look at the next slide, oh, actually, before you move on, Dr. Sibley, I also note that we were able to make 48 visits and facilitate those in Spanish this year in your DLI classrooms. So we have a Spanish-speaking facilitator. And so in the DLI classrooms in third, fourth, and fifth grade, all of those visits happened in Spanish, which was pretty cool. We were a little worried, like, will the third graders have enough Spanish to have that conversation? And they did. And of course, we support their acquisition of vocabulary by encouraging them, if you don't know the word, just provide it in English and we'll help you get there. So it's a great way to really increase those vocabulary skills. Over the last few years, we've really taken a deep dive into our assessment. And so this is the data from this year, looking at the number of supported inferences during a 30-minute conversation. And so we were pleased to see the change in growth looking from fall to spring and the rise in the number of supported inferences without prompting, and then the decrease in unsupported inferences, meaning students were increasingly becoming more confident in just providing evidence to support their thinking. We also analyzed the writing, looking again for the same thing. Is this transferring then to what students are writing? And so we were pleased with that growth as well. Another classroom program that we bring into the school is Steve Sessken. Again, not a, not a new program. Have any of you ever seen Steve? I'm wondering. You probably, he's, he's been around for a while. He's been coming for several years, and he enjoys his morning routine at Modox as well, while he's here. But Steve was able to spend a day at OJ Neighbors this year. While he was there, you.
I've heard about it, yeah.
You have firsthand experience with that. He wrote a song. I wish we could hear it, but I, it's not going to play through the PDF, I don't think. But the name of the song was called "The Best School Ever." And so I do have it recorded. I'd be happy to share it. But beyond writing songs with the kids that really promote a positive school climate, he does a fully prevention assembly as well. Our classroom teaching artist residency is pictured on the left is Brian Kraszewitz, and on the right is Kevin Stone Rock. And Brian provides a residency that integrates English Language Arts Standards and Music and Theater and visits multiple times throughout the year to just give students an alternate way to learn the same standards that the teachers have to teach. And Kevin Stone Rock provides a first-person interpretation of two different historical figures. So he goes into fourth grade and really focuses on the time period before Indiana was a state with his Hoosier Pioneer Assembly, and then his Civil War character with Billy Yank, Songs and Stories. And so those are two other programs that we appreciate the collaboration with your teachers as we bring those in. Again, just trying to assess to make sure that what we're doing is furthering the standards that they teach. One of the things that we ask them is how does integrating the arts into what you're already teaching in your per-content benefit the students? And you can see those responses there as well. So moving out of the in-school programming into the programming that happens at Honeywell, we host two gallery receptions in our Clark Gallery for students. And this year, on the left is one of your high school students' pieces of art that was selected as a banner winner. 63 of your students participated in the winner banner competition, and we just took down 80 Wabash City Schools students' art from the Clark Gallery from the spring show as well. And Wabash County Honors Band and Choir, so I'm excited to say that we just hosted in March the 49th year for this program, which is pretty amazing. So kudos to Mr. Neville and Ms. Winery because they prepare students quite well for this experience. And to set the stage, in March, March 8th, mark your calendars because that will be our 50th year celebration for this amazing program, and it's going to be, it's going to be an incredible event. And then if we keep scrolling, our last program is our Honeywell Heartland Media Arts Program that happens at Equals Theater on the second floor. And this year, seven students from Wabash High School participated, earning a combined total credit of 33 credits from IB Tech. So just, we appreciate, again, your teachers, whether it's your classroom teachers, hosting, our teaching artists or facilitators, or your art teachers who provide incredible art for the gallery, choir, and band for Honors Band and Choir. It's just truly a great partnership, and thank you. Do you have any questions for me? Hopefully now if somebody says, what, what, what does Honeywell do at your school? You have, you are maybe able to answer their question a little bit better.
Thanks for presenting, Ms. Christie.
Yeah, Honeywell's been a great partner for Wabash City Schools for a long, long time, so thank you for all that, all that they do for us and our students.
I do have a real quick question, sorry. If there's like a new teacher, how do they get this information? Do you send this out like yearly or like, hey, we offer these programs, we'd like you to participate? How do these teachers know about?
No, they get the information done in a lot of different ways. If it's our classroom programming, we'll reach out to them. If it's programming that's happening at Honeywell, we put them in our system, so and they'll get an eBlast, and then they can sign up for, you know, bringing Steve Sessken in or coming to a student matinee, which I didn't even talk about those, or field trip. So if it's an in-school program, we reach out to them. If it's something that you want them to come to us for, they'll get an eBlast. It'll come to them, and then they can sign up. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approve the attached administrative contracts for 2023, 2024.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion.
For the 2023, 2024 school year, pay for all administrators will remain the same as the current school year, 22, 23, with the exception of Mrs. Warnock. She has completed her master's degree and has received her administration license, so she will move from Dean of Students to Assistant Principal at the middle school. Her pay will be increased over the next two years to get her in line with other administrators. We have also removed the AD position with those responsibilities being put on Mr. Stone's plate, and I will take over the CFO duties.
Okay. And those salaries are as follows. Amy Sibley for Superintendent of Schools, 260-day contract. This is the first of a three-year contract at a salary of $119,180. Matt Stone, this is the Chief, Chief Operating Officer, Athletic Director, first of a two-year contract, 260 days at $95,950. Josh Blossom, Principal of Wabash High School, first of a two-year contract, 230 days at $96,960. Mike Mattern, Principal of Wabash Middle School, first of two-year contract, 218-day, or 210 days at a salary of $88,597. Beth Philippi, Principal of OJ Neighbors, first of a two-year contract, 210 days at a salary of $76,760. Kathy Wilson, Director of LH Carpenter Early Learning Center, first of a two-year contract, 210 days at $71,573. Jeff Galley, Assistant Principal of Wabash High School, first of a two-year contract, 205 days, salary of $74,313. Jennifer Warnock, Assistant Principal of Wabash Middle School, first of a two-year contract, 205 days at a salary of $62,000. Justin Vale, Director of Technology Integration, first of a two-year contract for 220 days at a salary of $57,334. Is there any discussion on the proposed contracts? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve. All those in favor of approving the administrative contracts for 2023, 2024 indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item C, accept resignations of the following classified staff. April Welsh as Wabash City Schools Bus Aid effective May 24th, 2023. Marquise, Marquise James as Paraprofessional at LH Carpenter effective May 26th, 2023.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
We'd like to thank Mrs. Welsh and Ms. James for their service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignations indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approve the following for summer 2023, summer school 2023. Brittany Jernigan to provide up to 20 hours of extended school year instruction for an OJ student, June 1st through the 30th, 2023, at a rate of $35 per hour. Sam Scheidler as bus driver for Spark at a rate of $96 per day from June 1st through the 30th, 2023.
Some move.
Motion is second, discussion.
Mrs. Jernigan is providing extended school year for an OJ student that is attending the Spark program, and this is part of his IEP. Mrs. Scheidler will drive students for the Spark program. We were hopeful that our summer school driver could do both, but our numbers and their locations would have made for very long bus rides, so we're adding a second driver for Spark, and we appreciate both of these ladies' willingness to serve our students in the summer.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve hiring the following classified staff. Samantha Summers as full-time delivery truck driver for the cafeteria effective June 12th, 2023.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
Mrs. Summers will take over our delivery truck driver responsibilities. This position does work year-round. They deliver food to OJ and LH during the school year, and then to the various summer feeding locations during the summer months. We'd like to welcome Ms. Summers to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of approving the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve Abby Payton for 40 hours to complete library inventory at OJ Neighbors this summer at her hourly rate.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
This is customary for our library assistants to be given an extra week to inventory all the materials in the library.
All those in favor of approving the motion indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Item G, approve the following adjustments to bus driver pay schedule. Elimination of county route pay and increase base pay from $82.50 to $96 per day.
Some move.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
This is part of our cost savings plan. As we reviewed bus driver pay, we found that the county route pay originally started as foster care route pay, and that was meant to be given to a driver that had to drive a significant distance to pick up a WCS student that had been placed in foster care. And when we say significant distance, we're talking about maybe having to go to Warsaw or Marion or Roanoke, sometimes even further. Over several years, this morphed into county pay and eventually was given to all drivers, even when the county kids they were picking up were within the city limits. We have researched other districts. We've looked at their driver pay, and the amount that the base pay we are looking at, $96, keeps us competitive and in line with neighboring districts.
We, we met with, online on Zoom, Dr. Sibley and I met with Mike LaRoca, who is the Transportation Director for the entire state of Indiana. And his very first recommendation to us was to get rid of county pay. That, that if we're going to give any extra pay to drivers, it should be based on the time they drive and not where they're driving to. So, so we have agreed that we'll, we're going to do the best we can to make every driver's route as close to equal in time as we can, and if somebody does them longer, that's when we'll look to give some extra pay for that. And he also suggested that we survey the schools around us, and so I have a survey done of 20 school districts around us and what the average route pay is daily for their drivers, and the average pay was $94.75. So we feel the $96 was, was certainly there.
You said if one or, or two have a, have a longer drive?
Yes. Then, he said, that's when you put in some, some stipulation that you'll have an extra type of pay. So we, we'll see when we put all the routes together, if that happens, then we'll come back to you and ask to put in that in the book instead of county pay.
Okay.
And do it based on the time that they're driving, not on where they're driving to.
When do you anticipate having the routes determined?
We, yeah, we talked today, our goal is to have them done by August 5th. That would be the weekend before school starts. That's assuming we get the waiver, which we'll know more about that this week. So that's kind of our goal right now.
Is the reason that you can't have it until then based on you have to wait to see who is involved?
Yes.
Yes, based on registration.
And registration happens when I forget?
Yeah, we haven't set the final date. We have to, there's a lot of different things that happen with registration, and one of them is our, it gives parents the opportunity to sign up for the free and reduced lunch, and we have to wait on the state to provide us with information of which families are direct certified for that. And that works out better for us to wait for that because if a person is direct certified and they apply, there, that causes issues.
Any other questions from the board? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes. Item H, approve the following trips for the Boys Cross Country Team. Overnight trip for team camp to Sleeping Bear Dunes, Michigan, July 31st through August 5th, 2023. An out-of-state trip to train in Colorado at the YMCA of the Rockies Snow Mountain Ranch from June 10th through the 25th, 2023. Motion, second, discussion.
For the in-state trips and the trip to Michigan, Mr. Evans will drive the bus. The expenses for these trips, including fuel for the buses, will be paid and/or raised by the cross-country team. For the trip to Colorado, parents will be driving the team out, and all expenses for the trip, again, will be paid and/or raised by the cross-country team.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the trips indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item I, approve the following for athletics. Resignation of Fortunato Carrillo Jr. as Wabash High School Girls Tennis Coach. Resignation of Ben Backer as eighth-grade girls' basketball coach. Motion, second, discussion.
We'd like to thank both of these gentlemen for their time spent coaching our student athletes.
All those in favor of accepting the resignations indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, we had a great graduation ceremony last Friday night. I want to give a huge thank you to Mr. Blossom, Mr. Galley, Mrs. Denny, Mrs. Holly, and any other staff member that played a role in the ceremony and wish our class of 2023 the best of luck as they head into their future. Want to remind our families that, starting this week, all WCS buildings start our summer hours, which means that our buildings, including central office, will be closed Friday, Saturday, and Sunday each week. And this, we will stay on this schedule until the week of July 24th. Summer school's in full swing. We have summer school at OJ, the middle school, and the high school. And this runs Monday through Thursday until June 15th. And last, our flexibility waiver is on the State Board of Education's agenda for Wednesday. I checked it today to make sure that it's on there. We are hopeful that we will be bringing a revised calendar that will include the staff PD days to our next board meeting for approval.
With this being the first week of four days, when do you anticipate, knowing the impact that that's, when would you anticipate that?
Probably not till August.
Yeah.
I mean, because we'll have to see those, those bills for the utilities for June of DLI.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Sibley? Not items from Chief Business Officer, Mr. Stone.
Alls I, I really have is I just want to say one last time to thank you to Coach McWord and to Mrs. Fox, both leaving the athletic department. Mrs. Fox has been unbelievable for 22 years and pretty much ran the place, as anybody can tell you. And she's done a great job, and she's gonna be hard to replace. And so if anyone's ever deserved retirement, it's her. And then Coach McWord's been with us for 18 years. You know, he started off as an assistant football coach. He did a great job for us as our head football coach, really got our program turned around and had our first winning season in years and years. And then he's done a really good job with the athletic department the last five years. So certainly wish him luck at Heartland. And this is probably their last week in the office. So as they, as they go away and off to retirement, off to a new job, I just wanted to say thank you to both of them. And certainly, we appreciate everything you've done.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stone? Items from administrators. All right. Items from visitors.
Katina Schramm, 5155 West 100 South here in Wabash. Most of you know I'm a bus driver for Wabash City Schools, as well as a parent in the classroom. I wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you for approving the bus driver base pay increase. I absolutely love driving bus and building relationships with my students and their families. However, this year has been a very difficult, stressful year, sorry, for me as a driver. I don't speak for all drivers, but I know I speak for some. When I say we have felt unappreciated this year, when Dr. Sibley proposed this base pay increase, it showed me that she was willing to listen to our concerns and create a plan to help us out. So thank you, Dr. Sibley, Mr. Stone, and my wonderful colleagues.
All right. Items from board members. Steven? Rhonda?
No.
Jason? And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.